And he could scout from Hawaii on the radio.
Please rise for the indication by Reverend Dale Steed, Pastor Parson of United Methodist Church. Is there a pastor in the building?
Yeah.
Okay. Cliff, would you please lead us in indication, please?
Let us pray. Our gracious God, we thank you for this wonderful and beautiful day, this spring season. We thank you for the Easter season we have just celebrated. And we thank you for this city. We thank you for the place where we live and raise our children. The place where we grow up grandchildren as well. And all the wonderful things about living in Hickory. We pray tonight for this city council, for this city, for all the citizens herein, that we might at this meeting be gracious and good stewards of all that is before us. That we might serve not only you, but each other, and care for each other and for this city in a good and wholesome way. We ask your blessings to be upon us, and we pray in your holy name. Amen.
The main stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to apologize. Danny is president of Kiwanis, and they asked me to speak on kind of state of Hickory and government in North Carolina, and Danny couldn't drag me away last night.
So we're at special presentations.
Okay. All right, the proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week?
Chief Atkins.
Oh, okay.
Not Chief Atkins. Captain Wilson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crowe, and citizens, thank you for this opportunity to read the proclamation to lift up and honor our public safety telecommunicators. We have with us tonight three representatives, two of which are supervisors. We had Shelley Davis here, Nicole Sane, and Belinda Brockway. So I'll read the proclamation. Proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week proclamation. Whereas the public safety telecommunicators of the Hickory Police Department Communication Center who process on average over 100,000 calls per year are often the first and most critical contact that our citizens have with Hickory's police and/or emergency services. And whereas these telecommunicators are the vital link to those calling for help and to police officers and other emergency service professionals. And whereas telecommunicators monitor emergency personnel's activities by radio and telephone and provide them with life-saving information to ensure their safety. And whereas the safety of our police officers and other emergency personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by all Hickory police telecommunicators from the citizens who telephone, the Hickory Police Department Communication Center. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators of the Hickory Police Department Communication Center have contributed significantly to the safety and well-being of the citizens and visitors of Hickory through their role in the apprehension of criminals and assistance in quality of life issues. And whereas each telecommunicator, the unseen individual, providing a calm voice when emergencies arise has exhibited the departmental core values of professionalism, accountability, compassion, and teamwork, keeping our city, the citizens, safe. Now therefore, Mayor Wright, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of Hickory City Council, does hereby proclaim April 14th through the 20th, 2013, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Hickory, and urges all citizens to honor the employees of the Hickory Police Communication Center and recognize them for their diligence and professionalism to keep our city and citizens, employees, and visitors safe, proclaim the second day of April, 2013, by Mayor Wright. So Shelley, Nicole, Belinda. And I would just like to say that it's truly an honor. I have a unique position in that they, these three, there's 14 total telecommunicators that you, the citizens, are very fortunate to have working for you each and every night, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I get to see the amazing work that they do each day. I, being a resident of Hickory myself, can tell you because of what I see how fortunate we all are, you are. They're our lifeline as police officers, and I think it's fitting that we lift them up on the week of the 14th or the 20th, and every day, any opportunity you have to lift them up and honor them.
And a proclamation for Fair Housing Month to be presented to Lois Leonard from the Board of Realtors.
Remind she you're representing that person. Is she there?
Yes.
Oh, I present it? Okay. I'm representing the Board of Realtors, huh?
Okay. She is.
Oh, she is. Oh, Lois Leonard from the Board of Realtors. And her proclamation.
Hey, this been a tough, tough, tough hour for me. I'm sorry.
Too much grilling about Kiwanis, but...
Okay. Board of Realtors, Realty Executive, Lois Leonard Rucker. Whereas the National Association of Realtors, the NAR, celebrates the theme of fair housing opens doors, which reflects the possibilities offered by fair housing laws. Whereas the federal fair housing law prohibits discrimination on basis of race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, or national origin. Whereas to NAR, equal access is consistent with the spirit of the federal fair housing law. The association continues to enter into the HUD Fair Housing Partnership with HUD. HUD is charged with implementing the federal fair housing law. Whereas the HUD Fair Housing Partnership is based on the concept of using a voluntary compliance commitment as a supplement to the fair housing law to achieve equal housing opportunity. It provides participants with guidelines on marketing, advertising, training, and education, and it encourages cooperation with community-based fair housing and civil rights groups. Whereas NAR is committed to educating their members, as well as buyers and sellers, on how to fully comply with fair housing laws. Now therefore, on behalf of Hickory City Council, I hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month, and ask the citizens of Hickory to join the NAR in celebrating Fair Housing Month.
Next is persons present desiring to address council. I will ask that anyone come forward to the podium and state their name and address. We ask that individuals desiring to speak limit their conversation to three minutes. Our city clerk will announce the time in three-minute intervals. We ask that the person at the podium conduct themselves in a professional and courteous manner, that there be no personal attacks against any group or individual. This is the first time I've seen this, so I'm familiarizing myself with it as I go. Did this come out of the committee room here? What is this?
No, that's just...
Oh, that's what? Thank you. Okay. Thank you, sir. We ask that the members of our audience respect the person at the podium, that there be no outbursts either for or against the topic being presented. Council members will not answer questions. However, at the conclusion of a speaker's topic, any questions or concerns will be directed to the appropriate staff, personnel, to be addressed in timely fashion. There is a provision that the mayor can engage in dialogue with the people's speaker. But that is very rare. At this time, I will recognize anyone present desiring to speak, and if it's everyone's agreeable, I will do this in the order in which they have signed up. First, Bob Anderson wants to speak from Rock Barn Road, wants to speak about council member televising.
Good evening. I've been following your procedures here, trying to get an idea of televising your council meetings. I moved down here in 19, or 2007, from Connecticut. And in 1985, which is 30 years ago, I was one of the founders of our public access television station. And the first thing we did was to televise our council meetings. The main reason being a number of people being unable to come to these meetings, such as the elderly or the disabled, or for one reason or another. And it was a real success. And we started right off doing them live. That's really the way to do it. I know there's a lot of problems involved in that, but they can be overcome. I read the articles, and I listened to the minutes from the last meeting, and some of the concerns that were being raised. And believe me, they are a lot of the concerns that I went through when I first started. One of them being, I believe it was Ms. Fox, had a concern about people coming to the meetings. Good crowd here tonight, but we had the same thing. People not coming to the meetings. But we found it, by doing the council meetings live, we actually found it to be the opposite. A lot of people were sitting home watching it. They saw something going on they didn't like, and they came down and voiced their opinion. And we found that a lot of the people that came to the meetings, if there was something controversial there, there. And one person said that if people aren't coming, you guys are doing a job. And there was so much involved in it that, you know, I couldn't even begin to get into it tonight. But I have been in contact with Mr. Berry, Mandy Pitts, and Mike Bennett. And I have offered my expertise, so to speak, to try to help you go the right way with this, if that's the way that you want to go. But I do believe that if at all possible, that you should do it, and you will see the benefits from it. Thank you.
Dr. Joseph Inglefield to speak on the aquatics episode.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Joseph Inglefield, 510 Eleventh Avenue Place, Northwest Hickory. City council and staff, I have a vision for aquatics well crafted. It's a time now to jump in the pool with a splash. The door is open, the water feels great. Now is the time to embrace the opportunity that has been presented to the city of Hickory. A time for aquatics well crafted. According to your own survey, the entire city of Hickory embraces this central aquatics facility. Eighty-two percent of residents whom you represent, who voted for you, want this facility. Thirty thousand dollars worth of community input should be persuasive. The Rudy Wright Memorial Competition Pool would be a fitting name for the showcase venue of the Aquatic Center. Imagine the cannonball splashes that would happen at the ribbon cutting. Imagine swim teams from the area, potentially nationwide, in competitions. Family members splashing, playing, enjoying the water. Imagine all the children of Hickory learning the lifelong skill of swimming and water safety. Since Mayor Wright has said and promised on many occasions, every child in Hickory should be a swimmer. Imagine Hickory could produce more college-level swimmers with full scholarships to schools like Virginia Tech, Harvard, Yale, Duke, UNC Chapel Hill. Lenora Ryan University swimming teams hosting local collegiate competitions. Hickory High Swim Team, and it's hosting regional and state championships. Hickory has a proud history of swimming success with great coaches like Paul Shiffle at Lenora Ryan with his sea back team, John Jolly with the Seahorses at the Y, and Kathy Hitchcock at Hickory High, the Red Tornadoes. Or maybe it should be the Typhoons where the water is setting. Imagine what they can do with a facility that meets the talents of their, and talents that they have and those of their swimmers. Let's think even bigger. Maybe some Olympians. Yes, Hickory Aquatic Olympians, well crafted. I challenge the Park and Rec to produce Olympic athletes in any sport, but especially in aquatics. This would be an inspiration to all the citizens of Hickory. Sales on the square could lead to sales on Lake Hickory with sailing regattas, paddle boat competitions, open water swimming. But this all starts with an aquatic facility. This is not an amenity. Look at the statistics for deaths from drowning versus deaths from fires. We have a fine fire department with a great record. What we need is a Department of Water Safety. This is a public health issue. This is an economic issue. With jobs springing from training of fire and rescue personnel, lifeguards, recreation professionals, jobs that lead to healthier lifestyles and less misery. Unfortunately, we have been rated the fifth most miserable place to live in the country. We all know misery loves company, so let's snap out of it, city council. Be leaders well crafted. Be staff well crafted. The citizens of Hickory want an aquatic facility that meets the same standards of being well crafted as that that city council has set. You city council has set a high bar, so now is a chance to show us what you're made of. Don't be petty. Be crafty. Embrace it. Enjoy it. Revel in it. Remember, it is for all of us, but especially for the kids. Imagine if little Zara Baker had been on the city swim team. Just maybe someone would have noticed the bruises and the abuse. Let's honor her and build a swimming facility and provide programming that can make swimming facility a home for all of our citizens and future Olympians. Thank you.
No cheering, please. And no cheer. No cheering, no cheer. Slade Babacosa. Babacosa, I don't know.
Either way, it's all fine. On the same, really the same note here. I gotta tell you, I can't fathom that this is even a discussion when it comes to aquatics and having a new pool, water safety. I grew up in a place where pools were, they were everywhere. And I can understand that maybe up here, it's not the same environment with the lake just north of us. Really, I'm just, I'm flabbergasted that this is even a discussion. As I said, I am new here, so I'm kind of getting on top of some of this stuff. The Hickory Record, the newspaper. I only just read the article, just found out about the article recently. I know it's only a few days old, but one of the things I wanted to address is that it said in there, "The city removed the pools because according to officials, they are in disrepair and cannot meet federal standards for public pools." And later on, it says that, according to the article here, someone made the argument that the pools were underutilized. And I just, I couldn't follow the logic on that. So the pools that are in disrepair, potentially dangerous for being underutilized, surprising. It just doesn't make sense. I've seen, I've coached for 10 years. I've swum for competitively over 20, close to 30 years. Probably the last six of which were not competitive. It was kind of here or there. In the 10 years I coached, I was undefeated, by the way. What we did in South Florida is we had summer rec teams. When I started swimming, the city I was in hadn't won. We traveled to the other cities. By the time I was coaching in that league, we had greet in the city I grew up in. I've seen firsthand what it does to children. In fact, our team, it was "We Build Champions" was our team motto. I've seen the self-esteem grow in these children. I've seen what it does to them, how it molds them into adults, gives them a sense of responsibility. And to not have a bullet. In that newspaper article online, a gentleman, Eric Thomas, Hickory High School, he mentioned, he said, "It's harder to correct a felon than it is than an unguided child." And really, I want everyone to think about that. A community pool, you know, this is a community pool. This is where people can come together. It's where we can bring children. We could teach them to swim. You know, a splash park, if you've never seen a two- to three, four, five, six-year-old playing in a splash park, I gotta tell you, it's amazing. It's absolutely amazing seeing these kids running around just having a blast. It's nothing like I've ever seen them at a playground or a jungle gym. And the alternative really to the swimming, you know, what we're fighting against is MTV, Nintendo, sitting around in the air conditioning, not exercising, not getting outside. You know, these are unguided children. These are children that are not...
Three minutes.
Yeah, I'll finish up real quick. I just wanted to say, you know, thanks for hearing me out. Thanks for talking.
James Thomas Shipp.
Thank you, council. John 3:16 states, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only son, that whoever believes in him shall not perish, but have eternal life." I would like to start out by speaking to you about Jesus's parables of minding your own business and looking out for number one. Have any of y'all ever heard any of those? You haven't, because they don't exist. And yet, it is the advice that has been prevalently given to me over the years in this community. And it is one of the biggest problems that we face. A community that looks out towards everyone's interests is a community with a more solid foundation, the resilient community that we all wish to be. The first issue that I would like to address is the property that was 1859 Cafe. This was my aunt's restaurant. This property was assessed for $184,200 in 2003. And in 2007, the assessment was raised to $205,100. She is in the process of closing that property and selling it for $35,000. I have learned a lot about the predatory aspects of the local economy through this process of my aunt shedding herself of the burden that 1859 became. She wanted to sell the restaurant when my grandmother was in the process of passing away because she was putting all of these hours of work into the place, and she was losing money. She has been paying hundreds of dollars at the commercial rate to Hickory Inc. and Duke Power even after she closed the business, and y'all hadn't even been picking up the garbage in months. My whole family sacrificed blood, sweat, and tears in that place for 27 years. My uncle died while running an errand for items Jane needed on the morning of March 31st, 2007. We buried him six years ago tomorrow. This city has sat back and allowed that side of town to become rundown. We never felt like y'all were on our side. That area used to have several viable businesses that have left, all left one by one over the last decade. And now all that is left are rundown buildings and thrift stores and other nonprofit endeavors related to poverty. This woman was contracted to sell my aunt's property as an agent and auctioneer, including the building, and she did not operate in my aunt's best interest. This happened two years ago. She really made no attempt to sell the building, and the items inside the building were literally sold for pennies on the dollar. And she stripped the hood and ansel system and the walk-in...
May I continue? Thank you.
And a walk-in cooler from the kitchen and sold them for scrap to one of the local recycling businesses, destroying the viability to use the place as a restaurant any longer. That drastically reduced options to the market, to market the place, and thus cost my aunt a lot of money. Basically, my aunt was robbed in plain daylight. I personally contacted the North Carolina Auction Licensing Board, and this woman was reprimanded and sanctioned for what she did. But the damage has been done to my family, and pardon me for not chugging the fountain of optimism that I hear in here on a continuous basis. Oh, and that's the Link House, the second oldest building in Hickory, and it will be demolished by the new owners. My mother owns a townhouse in West Hickory and is on the books assessed at $53,000 by Catawba County. She is in charge of the homeowners association where she lives. She knows what is going on. This is not conjecture. The last couple of properties sold where she lives have sold for less than $40,000. A property there has currently gone through the foreclosure process, and the agent placed in charge of its sale told my mother that they hoped to get $35,000 for that property. Better yet, there are people that have fallen way behind on their homeowners association dues, including the properties that have been foreclosed on. The banks say they aren't going to pay the homeowners association dues in arrears, present, or future. These people have walked away from their obligations, and the other homeowners are going to be eating these amounts in arrears at the time that they are paying taxes on assessments that clearly aren't valid. What is my solution? Reality. I will talk to Catawba County about this. But it is high time that these property assessments match the realistic value of these homes. I can go on and on about unrealistically assessed properties in this community. We need to get real. Anyone with a clue understands that two factors go into the local property tax bills. The assessed property value times the property rate equals the amount owed. You basically claim that you haven't gone up on property taxes in 18 years, when I think everyone here would say that their taxes have gone up over that span. It is a disingenuous claim. Fix the assessments and raise the rates if you have to. But it is high time to be honest about the realities of the marketplace. And it is high time to be more vigilant about the unethical practitioner...
May I continue, please?
Unethical practitioners that have, I have mentioned. It is time to stop turning a blind eye towards this stuff. I have a long memory. This is my family that has been taken advantage of. Don't think it can't happen to any of you. The anger, the bitterness, the resentment that I feel towards some of what I've witnessed in this community has been honed and forged and still. It is a feeling that many have in this community, but instead of sitting back in hopelessness and despair, I have resolved to take a stand with the help of a few to move this community forward into dealing with reality. As long as I am here, I will continue to do my part. Matthew 25:40 talks about looking out for the least of these. It is time to start looking out for our neighbors. I am not the judge. There is a higher authority. There is a higher authority. Thank you, Council.
David Sagalow. And John Hare.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Wright, Nick, John, Council. I'm here for one real simple reason. We're really excited with the Public Arts Commission with a world-renowned sculptor opportunity to build a museum, a foundry, a studio that will bring traffic and tourists into this town. I brought John Hare with me. I'm going to pass out some of the clay sculptures, just photographs here, real quick. I've got a minute and a half. And John, I'm going to have John give you his background, his idea, what... John is from Cornelius, and he has been doing this sculpturing for several, several years, twelve, thirteen years. He was chosen by the 2008 Olympic Committee to do the sculpturing in China, and he has done over 55 commissions. We have a CD that we're going to give all of you to look at. We have been looking at buildings, we have been talking to people, we've been trying to raise money, and we think it's an exciting idea. And Brian and I have been working on this for about three months now, but I just wanted you to have the opportunity to meet John Hare and to get the inside story and hear his enthusiasm. John Hare.
Thank you.
Mr. Hare, we're going to reset the time.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. I have a CD, kind of my idea. It's a big idea because I do big sculptures, and people love big sculptures. In fact, I have the largest sculpture in the state of Colorado, the most photographed sculpture at the U.S. Olympic Center. I was the official sculptor for the U.S. Olympics for six years. Also have a 24-foot falcon at the United States Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs. And what I really would like to do is, I want to build a sculpture park. How many people here have been to Burt Green Gardens? Okay? There's nothing like that in North Carolina, nothing like that in Virginia, nothing like that in Florida. I have enough monumental sculptures, I have done 50 monumental sculptures. You may have seen the Martin Luther, the stone piece that I did at 101. I have two other pieces there that I did, but I have fulfilled 80 public art commissions in the last 12 years. I'm the highly commissioned monumental sculptor in the United States, maybe in the world, I'm not sure. I've won six major competitions in the last two years, so we're busy. And I love artwork, and I'm also a musician. I played with Jimi Hendrix, I worked with Simon and Garfunkel back in the 60s, and I just love the arts. And I want to have a place where people are creating art. What you see on that CD, when you see a 26-foot bronze line being welded together, you might have seen that down in Charlotte, or the 24-foot falcon that's at the U.S. Air Force Academy being patinaed. It's exciting, there's things going on, there's people creating. And when I was a kid, I always heard my parents say, "You should be like God, be like God, be like God." God's a creator. The joy in life comes from making things, comes from doing, comes from gardening, from cooking, from painting, from sculpting, producing, creating something with your time. So I want to build a sculpture park that would be a major tourist attraction. Burt Green Gardens, for example, in 2009 and 2010, at the height of the recession, did $9 million, both of those years. So I think any investment by the city or the Public Arts Council would be totally paid back in just a few years. There's a huge market in Charlotte, people that live in Charlotte have nowhere to go. They go to Myrtle Beach, they go to Burt Green Gardens. Let's have them come to Hickory. Let's have them come to see the United States' only sculpture park, working sculpture studio with a foundry where you can see bronze being poured. It's exciting stuff. So, thank you. Appreciate your time.
I had the pleasure of seeing even more of your work in there, and I'm sure a lot of that is in here. I made your decision.
Yeah, there's a lot of things in there. I have 50 monuments that are on there. One thing I wanted to do was to have a sculpture museum where you could come in and see the actual clay sculptures. We have 45, I think, monumental clay sculptures in my studio right now. It'd be a monumental task to move them all and put them on a museum display, but it would be a super interesting thing. We give free tours right now. We have groups come in every week, seniors groups, little kids, school groups. We had the North Carolina Tourism, people come in and look at the place because they wanted to put us on the map. But really, it's a small place, I don't feel like I want to charge people money to come and see my studio. Usually with the tour groups that come in, I spend about an hour with them, just talking about, you know, what you can do. People say, "I could have been an artist, I could have been a musician." It's not too late, but you need someplace that's going to push you to do that, someplace that's going to get you excited about art or music or whatever it is that you're into. And that's the kind of place that I want to have. And I would love to do it here in Hickory. I'm right down at Lake Norman, it's a short drive from me. We have been looking at property and talking about that. I don't think, for the money that would be invested, it would only take a few years to recoup that. And you'd have a tourist attraction that would go on long after all of us are gone. So, thank you for hearing me, Mayor, council members, thank you.
I think it also fits well with our pottery here, Mr. Chair. Mr. Cliff Moon.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, Mr. Chrome, and Mr. Beal. My name is Cliff Moon, as you know, 2925, 8th Street Court, Northeast. Mr. Mayor, I also missed the last two meetings of the council and had the privilege last week of listening to the tape of the council meeting with somebody else. And on that tape, I was listening for the discussion about the videotaping, but one of the things that really stuck out to me on that tape was Councilwoman Fox's comments at the end of the meeting in regard to House Bill 150. And I want to mention that in just a moment, but I want to come back to the videotaping for a second. I can't say anything better than that gentleman did back there about why we need to videotape this council meeting. And I am convinced, and I know that Councilwoman Fox's heart is in the right place when she was concerned about folks being here. And I want people to show up here, too. But one of the things that our framers and our founders of this country stood for was the idea that we had to have an educated citizenry. And one of the things that I think videotaping this meeting would do would be to guarantee a better educated citizenry around Hickory for this. And I think it would generate, I think that you're right, sir, that it would generate more interest in our council, and I hope that you will, as you have postponed the discussion of that until the budgeting time, I hope that those things will be taken into consideration as we go on. Because as I have said many times standing up here, it is not, and I read the article this week on our branding, and I thought it was such a good article, and I know, I know for a fact, you've all told me, we do want government well-crafted, and I think that's going to be very important as we move forward in doing those things that move this city forward. I don't want to speak directly to House Bill 150, but I do want to say that as I've been watching the legislature, there are a lot of things, as you're aware, that are coming down, and I'm not sure how many people here are aware, that are affecting municipalities across this state. And I'm very concerned about those things. I understand, as you know, that the legislature has the authority to do what it will with these areas, but they are moving, what I think is to usurping really good government at the local level and hurting things around the state. It's not just Raleigh with Dorothea Dix, it's other things, and it's things here that affect us. I've written our legislators on this, and I want to keep writing them on this. I want to urge you, please, in the ways that you have, through the association of municipalities, through other means, please do everything you can to encourage our legislators here to not bind you and to not usurp the authority that you all have, because I still believe that the local government, the government closest to the people, is still the best government, the government that is most receptive to us. And I want that to continue here in Hickory and around and throughout this state. And so I hope you will really work hard. You're going to have to reach out to them, as we were mentioning that. I don't think they've called you up on these things just yet. So, please be, please keep up with those things and do what we can to do that. Because I can see that the gentleman that was just here, that it's possible that you don't get to decide whether or not we can have something like that here. It is possible that the legislature would not allow you in some way. I mean, again, I'm not looking at that in particular, but to do that, and I think that would be very sad for our city. Thank you very much for the information.
I will say that I know for a fact that some of our council members have been involved in personal discussions with some of our representatives. Mr. Jay Franklin Davis.
Evening, City Council. Citizens of Hickory. In the name of God, the beneficent merciful, I have seen local officials talk about what a positive it is that our local labor costs are so low. The median income of our area is 25% lower than that of the U.S. median income. Go out here and ask an average person if they think it is good that they make 25% less than what the average person makes in the rest of the country. The new Healthways study that just came out says that one out of three people in this area are obese, not overweight, but obese. That means that those people are about 50 pounds overweight, and it isn't getting better. We can see it, most of us in this room are overweight, when we are going to make, when are we going to make it our priority to champion healthy lifestyles in this community? With a swimming pool in the area, it would be, that would be a step in the right direction. And if I remember correctly, I think when the stress were held, when we paid money, the citizens of Hickory paid money for the state, I think that all four quarters said they would like to have a swimming pool in the quarters. Okay, this study says that we are the fifth most miserable metro area in the United States, and Hickory is the hub. How does it fit into being an all-American city? Hickory has to champion the effort to get people healthy. This is the same study that came out two years ago, and we haven't improved. One thing the study says that the five-year outlook of our people is the worst in the United States. People don't think it's going to improve, and that is understandable because things have continually gotten worse since 2001, and there has never been a sense of urgency amongst government and business leaders. The study that rank us at the bottom, Gallup, Healthway, Forbes, Milken Institute, U.S. News, and World Report, and you tell us we should ignore that. Just think positive, and everything will get better. I have a friend that has been married three times, and when he was having trouble during his third marriage, I felt obligated to point out, "Hey, man, maybe it's you." I don't understand why everyone thinks that these people are out to get us. Why would they be out to get us? Do we pose some kind of threat? It's having low wages, low education, high unemployment, and high obesity threatening? We need to get on the same page. We need to figure out some things that we can do to fix these issues we face. Seems to me that the simplest of these issues to fix is the obesity issue. The only reason why you think it's hard to is because you haven't done anything about it.
Three minutes.
Get the medical community on board and come forward with a 10-page step plan to move this issue forward. Let's get people outside. Let's get people walking and riding bikes. Let's get people swimming. Let's get people thinking about what they are doing to their bodies. Let's get people to take ownership of their lives. I remember years ago when we used to have splash parties at the Ridgefield Community Swimming Pool. It was vibrant, everyone came out, but we all know that Parks and Recreation and other different groups of people, they neglected that. I brought that out in the community meeting in Ridgefield, and we all know the history on that. And as I always do, I like to refer to the Bible. We all are Christians, we believe in God and Jesus. Jesus said, "Take he who is chief among you, and let him or her be your servant." I feel that you don't know how to serve because you don't know how to love. When we love one another, things happen. See, in the English language, vowels, A, I, and U are interchangeable with each other. And also in the English language, F and V are also interchangeable. So when you love someone, you change that L-O-V-E to L-I-F-E. And when you truly love someone, you want the best life for them. You don't neglect them, you don't forget them. And also, I like to go back to the Bible. When you drink from the goblet of power, you appear drunk, and the people see you as drunk, but you do not feel or see yourself as drunk. So we need to be careful when we drink from that goblet of power and not to neglect anyone because we're all in this together. This is Hickory, North Carolina. I'm still here. I have no dependents, and I'm not married, but I'm still here trying to fight for all of the city of Hickory. And in our last referendum vote, I think that would be something on which the wise should reflect. We know the thoughts of everyone, but the citizens for Hickory Government only lost that referendum vote by 120 votes. And this took place before I was born, how this new system, how your system is set up.
Six minutes.
That is, people in your own communities, not just southeast and southwest, that's in your own community. And we all need to come together, pull the string, and pull this community back together. I beg of you, let us help. You don't need to go out of town to different cities, we can keep all of that here. We have tremendous wealth under our feet, like when Hagar was running between the hills, and what she needed sprang up from her feet. You have the opportunity to pull those resources from here in Hickory. Let's do it. And lastly, something was just brought to my attention. I've said it many times before, I think that we need to have a citizens' police review board. I've heard of different things in the community, in the Ridgefield community, of people being maybe even profiled, but something was just brought to my attention today. When a person who serves in the U.S. military, proud servant, when his wife was pulled over, not by one, not by two, but three police officers. Because they've been blessed to drive a nice car, and I know how that feels because I've been followed and things of that nature. That has been, what she wanted was an apology, and that was given, but I know that the Hickory Police Department is employed by you. And I have something very personal that happened in 1999, when my uncle came to my grandmother's funeral here in Hickory, North Carolina. My uncle was brushed off, and he was sent away when he was actually in the police department. And my uncle, he was found dead in front of the Hickory Metro Center off of Vine 40. I'm pretty sure you remember that, if you were here then. Let's get together, let's sit down, and let's make this city the best city like it was. Now, we have nothing to brag about. It was the furniture capital of the world. We have the best resource here. If I had to bet on anything, I would bet on the workers here in North Carolina, in Hickory, North Carolina. I've been in the manufacturing field, I've been in it for 25 years about.
Nine minutes.
You ready to wrap it up?
Yes, I want to wrap it up, thank you. But what we need to do, we need to sit down, and we need to pull this back together. We don't need arrogance. We don't need to... and we need to pull this back together. We don't need arrogance. We don't need to look after ourselves, or scratch each other's back when this doesn't uplift off. And I'm willing to sit down, and our doors open with my civic organization, which spawned out of us wanting to do something to help our city become greater than. Our doors open. You can talk to me after this meeting. But we do need to sit down, and we need to talk. And if that doesn't happen, people are looking at everyone like the story of Icarus in the Bible. Fly a little higher. Fly a little higher. We just need to sit down and reason and dialogue. And dialogue is that, just that, talk. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to recognize longtime council member, Eliot, for being here along with his loved ones. Okay, a motion to approve the minutes of March 19.
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous, and all council members are friends. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
Seven minutes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion by Mrs. Fox, second by Mrs. Patton, and the vote is unanimous. Anything to be removed from the consensus?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Mrs. Patton. First public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask the city's community and government managers, David Lee and Eddie, to present to council prior to the public hearing consideration of implementation of fair housing choice and plan.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Members of council, I'm going to talk briefly about our analysis of impediments to fair housing choice and plan to affirmatively further fair housing. It's a bit of a mouthful, but I'll try to keep it brief for you. Affirmatively furthering fair housing. As a community development block grant recipient, the city is required to affirmatively further fair housing. That's the term that HUD puts forth for this. And it's a three-step process, basically. We develop an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, and that's the beginning stages of the draft that you have in front of you all, that talks about the impediments that there are to fair housing choice within the community. And then you also adopt a plan to address those issues. And then, obviously, the first step would be implementing that plan. And that happens on an annual basis with updates and implementation steps are put into the annual action plan that's adopted each year for our community development block grant activities. And then we take those actions over the course of the year. A lot of things do happen in April because of this fair housing month. This month, we actually have a number of advertisements that we've partnered with the realtors in terms of just putting some ads out in the newspaper, just basically making sure that people are aware of what their rights are. And just to give folks a brief overview in terms of fair housing law, basically, the Fair Housing Act states that there's no discrimination in housing on the basis of the following protected classes: race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, which really means children under the age of 18, and handicapper disability. Examples of housing discrimination that have occurred in the past, or in some instances still do occur. Redlining, not offering loans or instruments based on a particular location. The term kind of came about by officers actually drawing lines on maps and saying that they wouldn't offer policies or make loans in those areas. Blockbusting, where realtors basically kind of try to pressure homeowners into listing their properties with them, saying that members of a protected class are moving into the neighborhood, so they should sell now. And things like that. Steering occurs, kind of when real estate agents or other folks, they push people towards particular areas based upon their membership in a protected class. For example, if someone was a Chinese immigrant, only showing them areas where there was a large Chinese immigrant population, things of that nature. And the largest thing is just refusing to rent or sell, or changing their terms of a lease or purchase agreement based on someone's presence in a protected class. The fair housing plan that we kind of have, are putting towards you, the draft, a lot of it focuses on education and awareness. We did some study of the actual complaints that were received by the Department of Human Relations, the Human Relations Commission, which is part of the Department of Administration at the state level. I believe there were six complaints within the city of Hickory received by the state between 2008 and, I think, December or so, when I got the information from them right before Christmas. And none of those had been, there wasn't a finding of discrimination in any of those. They were either all dismissed by the commission, or just the complainant did not wish, they withdrew the case and didn't wish to go any further with it. So, in that vein, since there weren't very many complaints, and since those complaints weren't resulting in findings of discrimination, really, what the main thrust of this is, is putting out more information and educational and awareness in the community to make sure that everyone is aware of what their fair housing rights are, and how to access those rights, and how to make sure that their rights are being upheld. And that, you can do that by, basically, if you feel there's any discrimination against calling the Human Relations Commission at the Department of Administration, and they can kind of walk you through the process. As such, there's really six principles in the plan. The first is opening the housing market and opportunities to all persons regardless of any characteristic or status, creating an environment that encourages a small business climate, or to provide fair and decent housing, that the city has an obligation to protect the rights of all persons seeking housing, especially those covered under state and federal discrimination laws, that the city is committed to making housing rights better understood for all residents seeking housing, discrimination against any individual group harms all residents of the city of Hickory, and deprives individuals of opportunities to be created, productive members of their community, and that the city of Hickory has an obligation to consider fair housing issues in making decisions that would affect the opportunity for housing. And that is the second, main part. You can have, there's a full bullet list of a lot of the specific, more specific actions in your draft plan. But the obligation of the city to consider those issues when making our ordinances. Some of those issues have come up in recent updates to the land development code. We've made it a little bit easier and expanded the number of districts where, for example, making multifamily housing available in commercial districts where it wasn't before, what was only permitted with a special use permit before, that has kind of enabled that to be built in a couple of instances where it might have been, made it a little bit more difficult if it needed to go through a special use permit process. And the other side of that is, you're not affecting single-family residential neighborhoods negatively if you're putting it in a commercial area. And the other, some of the other things are, deal with, one of the recent changes that Mr. Fraser talked about a couple of months ago was restrictions at group living facilities on the number of people per square foot. Those restrictions were lifted, but we kept the special use permit process in place, but it enabled, you know, it helps people of all the protected classes. Basically, it's assistance in terms of being able to operate those types of facilities. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lee Manetti. Now, we've had our public hearing, and as we always do, we allow those who speak against the proposal to speak first, and those who wish to speak for the proposal to speak again, or second. We ask that both sides limit the comments for 15 minutes. Obviously, we don't know if we have one speaker, or 15 speakers, or no speakers, but we do provide timekeeping at three-minute intervals. Again, we ask no cheering, no jeering. Be respectful of each other. I declare the public hearing open, and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed, and ask for motion or discussion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fox, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Make the public hearing.
Second public hearing. I'll ask Mr. Lee Manetti to come back to the podium and present the city council consideration amendment to the city's community and government block grant budget and action plan.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, members of council, Mr. Prudential. I'll be brief tonight. This is a, this is an amendment to our CDBG budget, our community development block grant budget. The total amount of the budget amendment is $150,000. And this is to be taken from unused housing rehab money. There was a large amount kind of left over in that budget in our 2011 budget year. And one of the ways, and a couple of projects have come up that would enable us to use that funding. There's two projects contained within that. The first is $50,000 for, that will go towards the construction of a picnic shelter and accessible bathroom facility over at Kiwanis Park in the Kenworth neighborhood. The only accessible bathrooms are located all the way down on the other side near the baseball and softball fields. So this would enable a more substantial shelter and accessible bathroom facility up closer to the neighborhood and the playground facility at Kiwanis Park. The budget amendment is for $50,000. The remainder of the funds for this would actually turn out of next year's budget. But rather than doing two separate budget amendments, since we had another project coming, we figured doing it once would simplify things a bit. The second item is a loan to the Hickory Soup Kitchen for the purchase of a new facility for them to opt, for them to rehabilitate and then move into. The loan will be in the amount of $100,000. The current terms would be 3% interest rate over 20 years for this. They have asked to defer beginning payments for two years to enable them to do some fundraising or to fund the actual renovation efforts at the building that they're looking at purchasing. And that property is located at, on First Avenue Southeast. It's the former Ferguson Plumbing Building. We have done this on a new, for numerous other nonprofit organizations such as CCM, Habitat for Humanity, Interfaith Housing Development Corporation, Exodus Home, using the CDBG dollars as a way to finance the capital improvement requirements of some of our nonprofits that serve low modern income individuals. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I declare the public hearing open, and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal.
Is it possible to ask a question?
Not speaking, Eddie.
I don't really want to speak against, and I know it's the time for against, but I wanted to know how much, he mentioned how a large amount of money left over from the 2011 CDBG block grant. Does he, do we know how much money that is?
The budget amount, the amendment isn't the amount of $150,000, and that's...
No, I understand that. You made the statement that this was coming from a large amount of money that was left over.
Mr. Manetti, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I'm good. I think I asked my question.
What I would suggest, Mr. Murray, since this is a public hearing, is to let Mr. Moon make his comment. At the end of the public hearing, if the city council wishes to follow up on this question, Mr. Lee Manetti will come back and say, just maintain the call on while we...
I'm good with that.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this proposal? Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Dana Stockinger, and I'm the chairperson of the Hickory Soup Kitchen Board. And I just want to say that we, we've been in Hickory for 20 years now, and over that time, we've grown. We've provided a very good service. By making this move to the new building, we'll double the square footage that we have available, and it will allow us to expand the services that we're able to offer, and will allow us to serve more people. So I just really appreciate you considering this. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council members, my name is Austin Pierce. I'm the director at the Hickory Soup Kitchen. Certainly appreciate the support. For decades now, the foundation of the Soup Kitchen is rock solid. The community is very giving, such a giving community to live in. Our volunteers are in great abundance. Times are tough, but there's a tremendous amount of support for us. And for that, I thank you and the citizens, and thank you for considering this. Thanks.
Mr. Lee Manetti, do you want to address Mr. Moon's question now?
Mr. Manetti, I'll rebut and then close the call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. We had nobody speak, okay. Is there anyone who would like to rebut the, those speaking for? Well, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed before we get the answer to the questions. I declare the public hearing closed.
I'm not sure. I don't have our budget in front of me right now. But what I can say is our, the CDBG funds, they do, you know, as you know, the city obviously operates on a June, July 1 to June 30 fiscal year, and our CDBG dollars do the same. However, those dollars do roll over into, you know, future years. This project would probably use, along with the project that was just approved, will use the vast majority of the existing funds left in that 2011 fiscal year balance. There may be a few thousand here or there, but this budget, then it will take care of the vast majority of the remaining funds. And then, any additional funds would just, basically, they'd remain in whichever line item they were, you know, when they, when they were originally approved.
We don't lose them.
Correct.
And it is a loan, so repayment allows us to loan even more money.
Yes, exactly. That, because the amount of money we get from the federal government has essentially gone down every year over the last 10, 15 years. So allowing, doing loans on certain activities does allow us to generate some program income that is then funneled back into eligible community development block grant projects. Good? Thank you, sir.
Any other questions to comment? Motion? Motion?
I would prefer...
Say.
I just think Hickory Soup Kitchen, they do a tremendous service to our community, and it is a lot of support from all the citizens to help support that. They do a great job.
Motion by Mrs. Patton, second by Mr. Seaver. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion's carried. If, incidentally, if you missed the article on Mr. Pierce in the Hickory Daily Record, you ought to do it. It was inspiring, and I was just glad to read it and know more about you. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the first department will report. I'll ask the Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Mac Niffla, to come to the podium and present the council consideration of a lease of one of the city's facilities for the Hickory Music Factory.
Mayor Wright, Members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, good evening. Tonight, before you, for your consideration is a lease agreement with Hickory Music Factory. Just to give you a little background, when we began discussions, probably back in the spring of last year, about some possible city-owned properties for lease by Hickory Music Factory, the discussions we had, we wanted it both to be a win-win for both the city of Hickory and Hickory Music Factory. And as I take you through the, through the presentation tonight, I think you'll see, you'll see that too. And after I go through my presentation, Rick Klein, who is the Assistant Director for the Hickory Music Factory, is here tonight, and I'd like to make a few comments, if you could. Just to give you a little background, the mission of the Hickory Music Factory is to provide and help preserve music in the community through lessons, performances, and outreach programs. You can see Hickory Music Factory is a nonprofit, five oh one C three organization for students, teachers, artists, and patrons, really to learn, create, and experience all things music. The leased facility that's being brought before you tonight is, is a building within J.C. Park, which formerly housed our administrative offices up until the time. Those offices in 2003 were moved to Highland Recreation Center. The lease will be for an initial, for an initial period of five years, and then it's an option to renew for additional five years. The rental fee is $1 per year. Basically, the lease present, lease premises will be used by Hickory Music Factory to house its business, its business headquarters and its operations. Operating hours will be, you know, between hours of seven a.m. and nine p.m. Also, the existing parking there at J.C. Park, Hickory Music Factory will all have, will also have use of that, as well as they will be allowed to install identification sign on the building. And the last bullet point there, any, any alteration, addition, improvements to the facility would be at the sole expense of Hickory Music Factory. And like, Hickory Music Factory will be responsible for providing and maintaining its own telephone, internet, cable systems, and paying all associated bills. And then Parks and Recreation will make the lease premises suitable and satisfactory for occupancy by, by Hickory Music Factory. You see, just briefly, some of the maintenance responsibilities will be shared both by the city and, and Hickory Music Factory. They will be responsible for providing all supervision, labor equipment, tools and materials necessary for cleaning, including all trash removal, relamping of all light fixtures, and will be responsible for basically just maintaining the interior of the facility in, in a good condition. Our staff, our responsibilities rest with the structural maintenance repairs, replacement to include walls, roof, foundation, floor, and doors, typical landlord tenant responsibilities, and responsible maintenance repair of building systems, to include HVAC, electrical, plumbing. Here's a little bit unique, unique about this lease agreement, that in lieu of Hickory Music Factory paying the normal monthly utility charges, those being electrical power bills, water bills, in lieu of paying that, Hickory, Hickory, what Hickory Music Factory will do is agree to provide the following services. And one of the, and one of our programs, right, right now, we don't have that music component in any of our programs all things, so this gives us that opportunity to provide, to provide music programs. As you can see, just running through those, and the ones I presented you, some of these will be done at the lease, lease premises, others will be done at, at, at various recreation facilities. But just going down the list, one of those items would be a music showcase, if you've ever, if you've been, seen a battle of the bands, is similar to that. Community music lessons, which our citizens would be able to take, to take music lessons. Musical petting zoo, you know, before you ask, what is a musical petting zoo? I know you've been to a, been to a petting zoo where you've got to pet different animals, but it's the same, it's the same principle, whereas different, those participants who signed the class will be able to experience different musical instruments under the supervision of trained instructors by, by the Hickory Music Factory. Just some other cuts, so music appreciation, music theory, so, so people like me who absolutely know nothing about music, about music can learn, can learn the basic, basic music. Recording project for spoken word contest, this, this just expands on one pro, one program currently right now. I'll wait till... As I was saying, the recording project, the spoken word contest, one ongoing program that we have right now is our staff at the Ridgeview Recreation Center does a portrait contest every year. What this partnership will allow us to do is the winner, the winner of that contest then will be able to record their spoken word with professional musicians there, professional sound studio there. One other thing, there'll be a jazz concert that will be done at one of our recreation centers with Hickory Jazz Orchestra. There will be scholarships available for music camp, although Hickory Music Factory does a great summer music camps. There'll be the opportunity, you know, for, for us to, to have students go, kids go to those camps, and then drum, there'll be opportunities for drum, for drum circles. Right now, we, in our discussions, Hickory Music Factory, we're scheduled to start the first-year programs will begin in September. Then all the programs, each year, we will review the programs on an annual basis. We will make adjustments. We may change a program, add to a program, take one out, add another, but we'll, we'll do that, we'll do that on a, on an annual basis. Hickory Music Factory then agrees to perform criminal background checks on all staff and volunteers working on lease present, lease premises, which they do that now, which is the same, same thing we do, we do with our, with our volunteers. The, the lease agreement was considered and approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission at their, at their March 12 meeting. The staff does recommend approval of the civil lease agreement with Hickory Music Factory on first reading tonight. And before I take any questions at this time, I'd like to introduce Rick Klein to come up and say if you will agree.
Thank you, Mac. My name is Rick Klein. I'm the Assistant Director to the Hickory Music Factory. Some of you may be familiar with some of the things I do with teens throughout the community. Myself and a large staff of music educators have teamed, teamed up to help form the Hickory Music Factory. We are a, a large alliance now of, of educators committed to community service for, for teens, for kids here in our Hickory community. I'm, I'm humbled and excited about this proposal. I hope that you will consider it. We're excited about all the many programs that we have in place and all the many programs that we have slated for the future, including teaming up with the Department of Social Services in the very near future to provide music for foster children and many other, many other programs that they have in place, at-risk teens included. And I just wanted to put a, sort of a face to, to the Hickory Music Factory and say thank you for this consideration and thank you for the proposal.
And with that, I'll be more than happy to answer questions.
Mac, since we haven't had a occupant for nine or 10 years, what's the approximate city cost on the maintenance factor?
Very, very minimal, because even though, the last year of Mr. Mike, the, the facility was really occupied on a, on a really daily basis, the 2008, 2009 fiscal year, we had our, our SOS program was housed in there. You know, when the state stopped that funding, we, you know, that program ended, but we, we basically maintained it on a, on a, on a daily, back on a, you know, on a regular basis.
Well, I don't have a question, but I think this is an exciting partnership.
So do we.
We've worked well with recreation and all the opportunities that Mr. Klein has offered this community, and this is, this is very exciting. And the building is, is a good building and a good location, which will be accessible to a lot of folks in Hickory.
I think it's also a very exciting thing for what we can offer to our youth, and I really admire Mr. Klein for his tenacity and what he's gotten involved in our community to do things for the youth and work in partnership. I think that's very important.
It was only yesterday that Rudy said he's always wanted a Petatuba, so...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give him. I've got something in mind already. Well, I think it's an inspiring thought.
I appreciate it.
Mayor, I'd like to lose approval of this music well-practiced proposal.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. Patton. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's you, members.
Next department will report, and I'll ask the city's Deputy City Attorney, Ms. Dula, to come to the podium. Ms. Dula is going to explain to council a complaint that the city recently received, a HUD-based housing discrimination complaint, the process that that involves in a subsequent settlement offer of the city itself.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Members of the city council, Mr. Berry and Mr. Crone. I'm standing before you tonight to present background and information on the complaints that were served against the city by the Department of, US Department of Housing, HUD. This is a fairly lengthy presentation. I'll try to go through it as quickly as possible, but as thoroughly as possible. January 31st, attorney, an attorney with the Southern Coalition for Social Justice filed nine fair housing complaints against the city, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Citizens Advisory Committee with US Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD. The nine complainants are listed there before you on the screen, Mr. Sutter, Mr. Pope, Ms. Bird, Ms. Francis Bird, Ms. Tyra Bird, Mr. Rick Eckert, Mr. John Chapman, Mr. Brandon Carson, Ms. Lisa Powell. Seven of the complainants are current Hickory residents. One complainant listed an address to his actual, to Toba County, and the remaining complainant lives, lives in an address in Hampton, Georgia. Once the complaints were filed with HUD, the process, HUD's process kicked into place. The case was assigned to an equal opportunity housing specialist and a conciliator, which is their term for mediator, in the Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity in the Jackson, Mississippi field office. There are actually two problems that are, are part of this process. The office is actually conducting an investigation of the complaints while simultaneously working to resolve the case with the city through the conciliation process. So both things are working at the same time through HUD. Under the law, the office is required to complete the investigation within 100 days or HUD must notify the parties as to why the investigation has not been completed within 100 days. If you recall from the first slide, the filing date was January 31st, 2013. The 100th day is May 11th, which is on a Saturday. So a determination or this case should be resolved by that point unless HUD chooses to extend the, the investigation. The next few slides, I'm going to talk about the actual allegations that have been in the complaint. Even though there were nine complainants, the complaint was actually the same for each of the nine. First of all, the first allegation is that the city is violating the following federal acts by engaging in racially discriminatory actions. The federal fair housing law, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Section 109 of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, and Executive Order 12892. I want to briefly talk to you about each of these acts, just to summarize what each covers. The Fair Housing, Fair Housing Act, which is actually titled later the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of dwellings and other housing-related transactions based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, pregnant, which includes children under the age of 18 living with parents or legal custodians, pregnant women, and people securing custody of children under the age of 18 and disability. These are the same categories that Mr. Leonetti just went over in his presentation, related to affirmatively furthering fair housing. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, in programs and activities receiving, receiving federal financial assistance. Section 109 of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 prohibits discrimination also on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, or religion in programs and activities receiving financial assistance from HUD's Community Development Block Grant Program. And finally, Executive Order 12892. As amended, it requires federal agencies to affirmatively further fair housing in their programs and activities, and provides that the Secretary of HUD will be responsible for coordinating this effort. The order also establishes the President's Fair Housing Council, which will be chaired by the Secretary of HUD. So this last one actually applies more so to the federal agency HUD itself than to the city, but it was also named as one of the particular orders that the city is allegedly Allegation number two, the complainants allege that based upon their race and color and the city's failure to affirmatively further fair housing in violation of federal law, the city has subjected the rich and most Hickory community and citizens to different terms, conditions, privileges, services, and facilities, as well as denied municipal What does this actually stem from? The alleged discriminatory practices began when the city demolished the Ridgeview and West Hickory, or the George Ivey Swimming Pools, which were located in low-income, and this, this is quotation that is taken directly from the complaint, "in low-income, predominantly African-American communities despite opposition from the African-American community." The complainants are also alleging that the, the alleged discrimination is ongoing because the city has failed to build a new pool at this time. Allegation number three, the city has not followed the Parks and Recreational Department's master plan recommendations, which include, one, equitable distribution of recreational facilities throughout the city, and two, construction of a centrally-located pool before closing the existing pools with city-provided transportation to the new pool. Just want to say a little bit more about that. This first recommendation, that is actually found in the 1979 and 1997 Parks and Recreation Master Plans. The 1997 plan updated the 1979 plan. And this particular recommend... And this particular recommendation actually was found in the 79 plan and was amended in the 1997 plan. In 79, the plan that was prepared by Gardner, Gidley, and Associates contained the recommendation that the city construct a large pool at what is now Stanford Park in addition to keeping both the Ridgeview and George Ivey pools. But by 1997, Gardner, Gidley updated the 1979 plan, and this was their recommendation at that time, that a large, that there was a move away from small neighborhood pools, this is a trend, towards large district-serving facilities, and the recommendation was still for a centrally-located pool at Stanford Park. However, they recommended busing participants who needed transportation to the centrally-located pool and that at this point in time that the Ridgeview and George Ivey pools be closed, Allegations number four and five, the city has failed to respond to the complainant's request that the city build a pool in a location accessible to the Ridgeview and West Hickory communities. Allegation five is that at a May 12th, 2012 council meeting, that the complainants weren't permitted to voice their concerns that the funding spent on another project, which is the sales, could have been better spent on a new pool. Allegation number six, as a recipient of CDBG funds, the city has failed to affirmatively further fair housing by identifying impediments to fair housing choices and taking steps to overcome the effects of the identified impediments, actually the information that, again, Mr. Leonetti shared with you tonight in the updated plan. The allegation is that the city has failed to follow the plan and to affirmatively further fair housing. On March 11th, 2013, the city filed its answer or response to the complaints, and the answer outlines procedural and substantive defenses and arguments to the claims. I've only touched on a portion of it. This is the actual response that was prepared and that was submitted to HUD. It includes the basic response and in addition, also several exhibits that were requested, documentation that it covered minutes from various public meetings. There's information related to the plans that were cited, the 1979 and 1997 plans, information related to the aquatic recreation study that was performed, the telephone survey, but this is the entire response that was submitted. And of course, tonight, there's no way I could present all of this. We would be here all night if I had to present all of this. So I'm trying to touch on the, the basic components or the highlights of the response. Response number one, the first argument that was raised or that I raised was a statute of limitations issue. Two of the, the acts that were cited, Section 810 of the Federal Housing Act requires a complaint to file a complaint within one year, 365 calendar days, of the alleged act of discrimination. The complainants allege that an act, a final act of discrimination occurred at the May 1st, 2012, City Council meeting, when complainants allegedly told, were told that the meeting was not the form to discuss the matter. And there's a little bit more we'll get into in a little bit, but basically, this particular issue, if it is a true allegation, does not touch upon fair housing at all. If anything, it would be a First Amendment free speech issue rather than an act of alleged racial discrimination, which is covered by the FHA. If that is the case, which I argue it is, that is an area for which HUD does not have jurisdiction. Therefore, if that final date is knocked out, then the last date of discrimination would have been the final date of the demolition of the pools, which was February 2011. Therefore, under the Federal Housing Act, the argument is that the complainants had not filed their complaint in a timely fashion, that they'd missed the 365 calendar day limit or timeframe. Also, Section 109 of Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act, it provides that complainants alleging discrimination under this act must be filed within 180 days of the alleged act of discrimination. Again, based on the date of February 11th, 2011, the final date where the pool areas were cleaned up and reseeded, the complainants would have missed that date. They would have had until August 11th, 2011 to file a complaint under Section 109 of this particular act. The second argument is that there's a lack of nexus between the closure and demolition of the pools and the Fair Housing Act, which again prohibits discrimination in sale or rental of housing or in the provision of services or facilities in connection therewith. There's no way in the complaints, the, the, the complainants allege that they have not been provided housing or had access to housing or been discriminated against housing. There is no rational connection between a pool and fair housing. The pools were constructed well before, long before these acts were even passed. They were constructed long before the Community Development Block Grant Program was created and implemented. So there is no connection, direct connection, to the Fair Housing Act and the provision of a pool. Response number three, against the allegation that the funds have not been appropriately used, and this is some of the information that I just stated, that the pools were constructed before those acts and before the Community Development Grant Program was actually even created. And the other argument is that the city has used funds to further fair housing efforts and other eligible projects, including, including certain improvements to recreational facilities in the Ridgeview community. And finally, the HUD guidelines themselves prohibit use of CDBG funds to construct or maintain pools. During the time when the discussion and the various meetings were occurring regarding the closure of the pools, a staff member actually contacted HUD employees in the Greensboro office with a specific question, can CDBG funds be used to construct, either partially or fully, used to construct or maintain pools? And the response from that employee was, no, no swimming pools. That employee has been contacted recently again, just to make sure nothing has changed, and the response was the same. Those funds cannot be used to maintain or construct pools. Response number four, or argument number four, that the city has not treated the complainants or their net communities differently. The city, as I'm sure council is well aware, closed, has closed all pools that it owned or operated, beginning in 2006 with the St. Stevens Pool, which was located in the city's northeast quadrant. Two, however, to provide some aquatic recreational opportunities, since 2009, the city, the city has provided a swim program and free swimming lessons in partnership with the Hickory Foundation YMCA. To clarify this last sentence here, the city has provided, previously provided, transportation to these programs, the YMCA, the city is no longer providing transportation, but I believe because it was underutilized. And parents prefer to transport their children to the YMCA themselves, so transportation is no longer being provided. But the swimming program is ongoing.
Ms. Dula, is that offered three times a year, spring, summer, and?
I think so, during the breaks primarily.
Spring, summer, and fall? I thought summer, Christmas break?
No, sir. We do it spring, summer, and fall.
And that includes teaching, teaching them how to swim?
And I believe there was 110 students this last month, I think, when the Y was 110.
It was 114, actually. We verified city residents and 98 participated. We did, we verified 114, actually picked up residents, verification points, but actually those 114, we got 98 participating currently.
Argument number five, and this is in response to the allegation that the city has failed to equitably distribute and locate throughout the city recreational facilities and opportunities. Five recreational facilities are actually located in word form, which encompasses the Ridgeview community, and they are listed before you here. The Ridgeview Recreation Center, Brown Penn Recreation Center, the Brown Penn Senior Center, Taff Broome Park, and Southside Heights Park. There are three recreational facilities and parks located in the West Hickory community, the Westmont Recreation Center, the Westmont Senior Citizen Center, and West Hickory Park. So within those two communities, you have seven different facilities or parks that are located in those areas. Number six, that the closure and demolition of the pools was based on several factors. The residence rates and the pool locations were never among those factors. Number one, a cost-benefit analysis, which included analysis of the tenants versus the revenues versus expenditures. Tenants was down, revenues were down, but expenditures were up, are going up, increasing. If you all recall, and I'm sure we all do, budgetary concerns were precipitated by an economic recession which impacted municipalities nationwide. Basically, the bottom fell out in 2008. There were cities across the nation that were cutting all kinds of municipal services, including some municipalities which even looked at doing away with their police departments. So cities all over were making very difficult, very hard choices about which services to continue to provide, how to fund those services, which services that needed to be cut, while also dealing with personnel issues. Do we lay off people? Do we not lay off people? The recommendations and plans for recreational services and facilities have often been amended in light of changing circumstances, but the key word is here, a recommendation is just that. So a recommendation is not etched in stone. Recommendations are often amended or changed depending on a variety of factors, for example, including changes, changing trends in the provision of aquatic recreational facilities provided by municipalities. The trend now is that many cities are getting away from providing actual swimming pools and going towards alternative aquatic recreational facilities such as spray grounds and splash pads. The actual demolition, demolition of the pools was approved because the closed pools created significant liability and safety issues for the city. I did not find the year, but there are many here who may recall that at one point in time, a young child actually managed to access the closed pool at an apartment complex. The child managed to gain access, the pool was fenced in, but the child got in anyway and fell in the pool and drowned. So even though the pools were closed, they were appropriately fenced, they would have been drained, there was no way to guarantee 100% that a child or even an adult would not access the pools and perhaps suffer serious injury or even death. So the demolition was for safety and liability issues. Response number seven, or defense number seven, the citizens do not have an inalienable state or federal constitutional rights to a pool. There's nothing even in our state constitution or our federal constitution that guarantees a citizen's right to recreation or pool. In fact, the state of North Carolina does not mandate that municipalities must provide recreational facilities and services off. And that's probably an amazing fact. A lot of people probably think that the services that the city provides, including water and sewer, recreational facilities, other services, that the state actually requires cities to do that, but that's not the case. The only service that the city is required, or cities are required, is this one, enforcement of the state's building code. Now, do cities choose to provide these services to their citizens? Yes, for a variety of reasons, but it's not mandated to do so. Response, argument number nine, again, this is related to the May 12th meeting, 2012 meeting, that the complainants were not permitted to voice their concerns. Again, if that allegation is true, which I, I argue that it is not true that the facts were stated incorrectly, that this may involve First Amendment free speech issues over which HUD has no jurisdiction. This was a meeting at which a citizen stood to speak at a time that was not designated for public comment. There was a need to clarify, there was a rule that was in existence at the time which allowed a citizen to actually remove an item from the consent agenda. That was a misunderstanding. The citizen was permitted to speak at the appropriate time, as were other citizens, which during that time was under recognition of persons requesting to be heard, which was at the end of the meeting. So people were not told they could not speak. It was about the timing. That is a free speech issue over which city council has authority to make time, place, and manner restrictions. That's been long settled in several cases, even before the Supreme Court, that can, the government can regulate based on reasonable time, manner, and place restrictions. Requiring a person to speak during the designated public comment period, that's reasonable. And again, if that allegation, if it is even true, which again alleges not, that's a First Amendment free speech issue. That doesn't have anything to do with fair housing, and HUD has no jurisdiction over that. Finally, council has discretion over which projects it chooses to pursue and fund. We do live in a democracy. There are citizens who have, are very passionate about many projects that they want city to pursue and fund. And to each citizen, that particular project is near and dear to that citizen's heart, and it is the most important project. But council has the obligation to make, to make decisions as to which project it chooses to fund and pursue. That's not discrimination, that's democracy in action. And if people are agreed over the actions that are taken, their recourse is at the polls, not through this kind of action. The Parks and Recreation Commission, however, has included a recommendation for a centrally-located outdoor pool in its work plans. And twelve, the city is pursuing alternative funding sources for recreational facilities and services, including aquatic recreation. We do have a contract with a national firm that researches opportunities for grants, federal grants that can be used for various services and projects. And to this day, this nationally-recognized firm has not identified funding sources that can be used for this particular project. Part two, and what we're actually here for tonight, although that was background to lead up to this. Attorney Earls, the complainant's attorney, submitted a settlement offer to the HUD conciliator on behalf of the nine complainants. The complainants have offered to settle the case if the city does the following. The city builds, if the city builds a large citywide pool near the site of the demolished Ridgeview and George Ivey pools, which would be the Highway 70 corridor near Fourth Street, Southwest and Seventh Avenue, Southwest, the pool should include the following features, spray areas, slides, and a lazy river. The recreational opportunities should include free swim, competitive swimming, swimming lessons, water safety instruction, and water, water sports. The estimated construction cost for the pool, and again, this is based on the letter, the settlement letter that was submitted by the attorney, estimated to be 1.75 million to 2.5 million, with an annual operating cost between 15,000 and 50,000. However, if you'll note, that information was obtained from the aquatic recreation study that was presented by Parks, the Parks and Recreation Department at the November 4th, 2010 public meeting, following, there were three prior public meetings in September. This particular option that was just outlined was actually option number two in that. This particular option that was just outlined was actually option number two in that study. If you recall, some of the other options included building the four district pools. One option was to build a citywide splash pad or spray ground. One was to put splash pads or spray grounds in all four quadrants. And then a final option was to build indoor aquatic recreational facilities. So this is option two. Now, these figures are from 2010, basically three years ago, we're almost three years ago. Conservatively speaking, that figure more than likely is somewhere now between 2 and 3 million to build this facility. What is the city's obligation? Well, the city has an obligation to respond to the settlement offer. The options include either accepting the offer as presented, rejecting the offer, or submitting a counteroffer. If council accepts the offer and approves to enter into a written conciliation agreement, that agreement will terminate the investigation of the city's potential liability and the complainant's right to pursue relief, which I'll explain a little bit more in just a moment. If council rejects the offer, does a presented counsel, a counteroffer, the investigation process will continue. And the HUD will make a determination as to whether reasonable cause exists to believe discriminatory housing practice has occurred. If reasonable cause is established, which would be a finding against the city, HUD must issue a charge. If a charge of reasonable cause is issued, HUD would notify both the complainants and the city of their rights to choose in 20 days to have the case served before administrative law judge or referred to trial to the appropriate U.S. District Court, which would be, for us, the Western District of North Carolina, U.S. District Court, the Western District of North Carolina. However, each complainant can file a civil lawsuit in federal district court as long as an ALJ has not begun to enter in process. That, again, assumes that a finding, there would be a finding against the city. However, also, if HUD does not find reasonable cause exists, say, for example, council elects to not take the settlement proposal, the investigation would continue. And at the conclusion, if HUD were to issue a finding or determination that there is no reasonable cause, that discriminatory practices have occurred, and the complaint were to be dismissed, each complainant can still file a civil lawsuit under the Fair Housing Act in either local, state, or federal court within two years of the date of alleged discriminatory practice, or of the date conciliation agreement has been violated. And that two years would not be in toll until the issuance of the determination. This timeframe here, the 100 days, does not count against that two-year statute of limitations. However, conciliation can be pursued by either party at any time prior to HUD making a determination, a final determination in the case.
Can we get you go back in previous?
Yes.
I won't read that list.
I have a question.
Sir?
If a civil, I mean, this is presupposing a lot of things, that the city would be filing, that it would be violating, the courts would be complaining. And a civil lawsuit was filed, or perhaps a civil lawsuit could be filed regardless if the city's plan to be filing. What kind of relief would a civil lawsuit see?
Probably performance, build the pool.
Build, okay, okay. So it's a?
There could be possibly monetary damages. I don't know, it would depend on how the complaint was actually drafted, as to what the people would be seeking.
Okay.
And again, that's just a, that's just a yes, based on what's in the current complaint. Right, my, my recommendation, based upon my analysis of the complaints and the response, or the answer to the complaints, my recommendation is that council reject the settlement offer and allow the investigation to proceed at this time. And then, again, that's based upon what you've seen tonight, plus in addition to what's in the full response to the complaints. I know you've had some questions along the way, but this is a time if you have additional questions, I'll certainly be glad to try to answer those.
I just want to say, I read your notes, and I must say, you have been extremely thorough in your response, and I appreciate the time that you have put into this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Billings. Do we have any later comments or motions?
I move for the climate settlement.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Spott, second by Mr. Yes. Do you prefer the discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Let's begin. I'm going to wait till the later day passes to bring another item up. Issues, requests, matters not on the agenda? I guess here's what I would like to ask, I'd like to make a motion, would I be permitted to talk about the HUD action that is presently, presently taking funds away from our city and sending them to Washington? I'd make that motion, but have a second?
Second.
Have a second, have a session? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The Housing Authority, to give you a little background, the Housing Authority executed a contract, to my knowledge, in good faith, to the low bidder, in, to my knowledge, a fair process, for some work to be done. That work was done by the, by a sibling of a council, of an authority member. That authority member recused himself, to my knowledge, properly staying away from the issue. Under a technicality, the HUD has asked that our Housing Authority pay back about $520,000 of funds, federal funds, that were used to pay for what I believe to be valid services rendered without conflict of interest. And I would just like to, when we're communicating with HUD on this issue, it might be, it might be a time that we can ask, is this a bill, shaking her head back there? Don't do that.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I think it's a fair question, that the Housing Authority has funds that they've accumulated, set aside for additional future low-income housing. I think anyone who's sat in these meetings knows that that's been an urgent priority for council, affordable housing and housing for low-income. We scrambled to find funds that we can use for that purpose. And for this fund that the Hickory Housing Authority has accumulated for that purpose, affordable and low-income housing, for that to have to be submitted to Washington seems to be absolutely counter to HUD's stated mission. And we need the housing. This is a large amount of money. It's more money, you know, we, we scramble to find sometimes 20,000 or 25,000 dollars that we can allocate to low-income housing. So I, I don't know exactly what I'm asking for, but I feel that, I feel that we should send a letter to HUD and ask them if they would not consider for, for going, those payments. One's already been made, and it has reduced the fund for low-income housing by a material amount. And apparently, HUD's position is that they will continue to make those, make those payments until the full 520-some thousand is reached, which would completely, completely diminish, completely eliminate those funds. So maybe what I'm, maybe what I'm just talking out loud about is sending a letter personally, I don't know.
We, we don't govern the Hickory Public Housing Authority, we make appointments.
We make appointments, but I think we have an obligation, an obligation to stand up for our citizens and their rights when another governmental unit may be, at least I heard it, may be hurting them, counter to our objectives and the objective of the federal agencies.
I don't disagree, certainly disagree with you.
It's defending, it's defending a group that needs and deserves to be defended. But no, it's not that, we, we are not responsible for HUD. We appoint that board, and we actually have no responsibility to remove anybody from that board, to get involved with their management in any way. But it seems like we should be able to, if we don't make this plea, do us only.
Chair for the back of the party, I mean, in my explanation, I make that call.
Well, apparently, that's failed.
Oh, well, but if HUD can't see that this action is hurting the very people it's supposed to help, I think that's disrespectful.
Now, it should start with that authority, but the local authority, but that is failed. And they've already written one material challenge. Well, maybe, maybe I just think about that a little more, and, but I, I'm in a letter-writing mood about that. And particularly with them coming here and forcing us to use our resources for allegedly discriminating on housing. That index, I'd like to point out to people that every council member studied that, we took it to heart. We think that the things, you know, the findings of that index, they've been well-publicized. We think that would be different if it had been just the Hickory location, but there still would be issues. We know that, we believe that would be issues. And that was our metropolitan area, so we're, we're calling on our colleagues across the metropolitan area to join us in taking bold measures to try to reverse the trends that could lead us to getting that kind of result. Second thing I wanted to mention is we will be having our council staff workshop in Durham, public meetings. We're going to Durham because we're going to look at a couple of things that Durham has done that we think we could learn significantly from. You know, you, economic development wise. And the last thing I wanted to mention, since Mr. Meisner had his comment about investigating the pool or something. It occurred to many that, if you get a chance, look at this sculpture that this guy was done, and it occurred to me that he might be able to do that long-awaited sculpture of Mr. Meisner, that we're going to put at the Northwest Hickory Waste Lot Creek.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to go into closed session? We have a motion to go into closed session?
To consider economic development.
To consider an economic development item. Do we have a second?
Seconds.
Motion by Mr. Yes, second by Mr. Seaver, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We can go back after that, so we turn to the seat.